You should be okay to do that.
Oh. We aren't seeing what you're seeing.
No.
But I think that's okay if he walks through it.
Can you see that?
No.
Can you see it, Bob?
There we go.
Yeah.
There we go.
Yeah.
So this is just a summary of the of the changes. All of these changes were approved by the Board of Selectmen to go back to the Planning Board for a public hearing which they they held on the eighth. They made one addition and I'll explain that. So we removed the sections dealing with the new historic districts, rights, landmarks, properties, modifying existing ones from the ordinance. However, of course, as any town ordinance, it can be amended by town meeting. So it doesn't eliminate the possibility of a new historic district, at least, but not through this vehicle. Expands the Historic Preservation Review Commission to five members. And the Planning Board asked to add that a majority of the membership must be Demerit County residents, at least three out of five. It allows non-residents who own property in Demerit County to be members of the commission and encourages the Board of Selectmen to appoint two owners of property within the district itself. It clarifies that that list of of structures, flagpoles, sculptures, well, you can read it, those are specifically exempt regardless if they're visible from the from a street or not. So those are all exempt. It requires the mission to render this decision in a timely manner and if necessary, schedule a meeting to avoid unnecessarily delaying an applicant. If the commission denies a approval, they must provide the applicant the reasons for denial in writing within seven days. Permits the commission to modify review standards if it finds by majority vote that there are special or unique circumstances associated with a proposed activity. Sometimes there are just circumstances or situations you just can't anticipate. This allows the Planning Board, I mean, the commission to consider unique circumstances and if it's critical, modify the standards. The commission can approve demolition of a historic or contributing building if the owner has made a good faith effort to identify and sell the building to a buyer willing to undertake repairs. Now, this is more than just a building owner going to a meeting and saying, look, I tried, that's it. There are a few steps, but it's substantially less than what was originally in the ordinance, which I guess this eases that section. There was a demolition delay period of 120 days. That basically is the period between when the applicant proposes to demolish a contributing or historic building and when they can actually do it. It was 120 days, which is pretty standard. And then if the applicant is proposing to replace or demolish, move or demolish a building and replace it with another building, there are four criteria. The commission has to find that there be no adverse impact on the historic character of the immediate neighborhood. The new has to maintain the existing building setbacks. That is, no parking in front, for example. It has to protect the historic setting and context of the property. And finally, new construction without replicating historic buildings will create false sets of historic development. For example, if a building is destroyed or removed, they can't put a new building that looks like it was built in 1850. It's got to be compatible and contributing, but it's not a exact duplicate of a building, of historic building. And it's got to be readily apparent that it's not a duplication. Now, this is in a historic district. If someone wants to build a building that looks like it was 1850, they can do it.
They can do it.
Free to do it, not in the historic district. So those are the changes.
Hey, anyone that is at this evening's meeting? I'd like to hear from Demerit County residents first and then business owners in the historic district second and anyone else after that. So does anyone have any questions or comments? And I don't see everybody, so just sing out, I guess. Raise your hand and I'll call on you, whatever's the easiest. Any questions or comments about the changes in the Historic Preservation Ordinance?
I'm sorry, my video isn't working, Robin.
That's fine. Go ahead, Susan.
As I've mentioned before, I am completely in favor of historic preservation. The process sometimes baffles me a little bit and I want to be really careful about it. I am concerned still with the sale of property and I'll and I'll tell you why briefly. I was speaking with Valerie, who brought these changes to the table today. And one of the things that she brought up, she said that what happens if larger, more wealthy companies come in and say they're going to build, they're going to restore the building and the owner has to sell the building? She gave examples of McDonald's, for example, coming in and having corporate cash to say yes, we can restore the building, you know, and the owner, the sole owner sells the building. What happens then if they are able to do that? So I'm just bringing this to the table because Valerie brought it up and I thought it was a legitimate concern. I know there's been some discussions separately about having things like McDonald's or Starbucks kind of come to Main Street and they've got corporate cash to do certain things that maybe a small homeowner cannot. But Valerie came to me today in my restaurant and brought this up and I thought it was worth putting on the table.
Want to respond to that?
We watered that section down considerably. It used to have a fair market value provision in it and it doesn't. So theoretically, the small building owner could, you know, ask a higher price than the fair market value. Ultimately, what's the reverse of that? The reverse of that is that we would prohibit a small building owner from selling their property?
I think her concern is that people who own property may not be as resource rich as developers or large corporations and that puts the average person at a distinct disadvantage.
Well, I think that's going to be an extremely unique circumstance, but but ultimately as a community, we're looking at the integrity of the historic district. And our goal, if a building is damaged, our community goal ought to have that building, if at all possible, repaired and put in the original condition, if possible. So any ordinance is some give and take, but I think the circumstances you mentioned are pretty unique. Now, I will say also that with all the things we've got going on, we have delayed presenting to the Planning Board a substantial change to the land use ordinance. And as I recall, one of the provisions is prohibiting formula restaurants or formula businesses from the C1 district. So the idea of
Is that actually on the books as a law or a? How does that work? I might be ignorant about this, so if you could.
Oh, no.
Well, if I could intervene, it's not not books now. And right now, you could have another Dunkin' Donuts or McDonald's or a Starbucks take over a storefront and as long as they may met the, you know, the the ordinance guidelines or laws with regard to the preservation ordinance, they'd be allowed to do that. Now, one thing
Are you guys finding that acceptable?
One thing, no, you know, that's up to that's up to the citizens to decide. You know, I've I've broached the subject a number of times over the years and there hasn't been an interest in doing that. But there are towns that are cities across the country that have successfully defended that type of ordinance in court. So
It seems like these things are related and should be presented as related. In other words, those that relationship between, I mean, if you're talking about historic preservation, for example, I know in Europe, they've had McDonald's come into these beautiful, like 200-year-old buildings and they have a little plaque on the outside of the building and they freaking gut the inside of the building. So my question, and I think Valerie's question, which I think is a valid one, is do we find that acceptable as a town? And the second question is, shouldn't these two things be related? In other words, historic preservation and and who, you know, I mean, I feel that there are inequities in terms of building owners not having the same deep pockets again as larger developers or corporations. And if we're talking about historic preservation, even if the outside of the building looks nice, do we really want to allow that?
Susan, there are two different issues. One is zoning issue, one's a historic preservation issue. And as I said, the, well, maybe I didn't make it clear.
They are related.
Well, they're related, but but they can't be tied together. The Land Use Advisory Committee has recommended a wide range of improvements to the land use ordinance. One of those, after much discussion, is to prohibit formula businesses as defined, and there's a there's a detailed definition, from being in the C1 district, which is essentially the historic district.
So that needs
Now, Susan.
That needs to be on our books.
Susan, what you need to do is show up at the Planning Board meeting when we review that and
Okay. I'm happy to do that. I'm seriously happy to do that. And I'm not trying to be a pain in you-know-what. I'm just saying that Valerie did present this issue and I've thought about it myself. I know other people who own property here have thought about that. And as much as they are sort of executed in different branches of town government, it is hard to deny that they are related.
They're related, but one is a zoning issue. We are, there are strict rules on how to deal with exclusion of uses geographically within a town. And so the C1 district is the vehicle for that. Now, this would not prohibit, for example, McDonald's or or any other formula business from being anywhere else in town where it's allowed, such as the C2 district. That provision I mentioned would prohibit that from being in the downtown C1 district. Those go, those are related, but they can't go, you cannot prohibit a use in a historic district. It's just not done. It's not, you need to have a zoning vehicle. In this case, we're using the C1 district. And I will be bringing that, we've had a lot of stuff, a lot of ordinance going, and now hopefully, we're going to be through with this and we can pick up the those changes, which only one one aspect of it is the formula business.
Yeah, and it is a separate issue, but you need to understand it's, there's going to be two sides to that story because you're you're restricting who the current property owners can sell their property to. So it's not going to be an easy issue as far as the the discussion goes, but it is it is separate from the historic preservation.
It's just that people are really moving out of cities right now. We've seen it in Newcastle, we've seen it across the state, actually. People are buying properties sight unseen, people with deeper pockets than the average citizen. And I don't know why that wouldn't apply to commercial space on downtown Main Street. So I won't, I won't belabor the beleaguer the point. I just wanted to say that Valerie brought this to my attention. I agree with her and I agreed that I would mention it.
Thank you. And, you know, as Bob said, that they are, the Land Use Committee is taking up that issue now in relation to some of the other ordinances. Because once this ordinance passes, if it does pass, it will have an impact on some of the other ordinances. And I think this is the first one that needs to pass and then some of those other issues will be taken up in other ordinances. So right now, what I, you know, I really want to get back to, what is the wording in this ordinance? And are there any questions or concerns with specifically, you know, this before us? Yes, sir.
Yes, Robin, just to, I think Susan's comments just really show that we need this ordinance in place. I have been involved for quite a bit of that process and I appreciate having that opportunity to do that. And many of my concerns have been addressed and I am particularly pleased to see that in section 107.10C, there's an encouragement to be nimble and be quick of getting things resolved. I think that will send a good message to the district. If you're planning on doing something, it will not drag on for too long because it says in the ordinance that that's the intent. So thank you for including that. And I would encourage the board to send it on to the town meeting for a vote.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for all of the comments that you've made over time. I do appreciate citizen input. It makes it so much easier when it does get to the vote. You know, all the questions have been asked and answered. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments on the Historic Preservation Ordinance? Okay, in that case, let's move on to, I had them all sitting right here and now they're all gone. The Charter Amendment regarding Historic Preservation Review Committee. We have to change the charter to accommodate a new committee in the town. And the Charter Amendment follows almost exactly with the wording in the proposed ordinance. And then the final is the Solar Energy Systems Ordinance. And this relates to, I guess, commercial solar energy farms, not, you know, the individual solar solar panels on people's homes or in their backyards. Matt?
Robin, I prepared to give you a quick summary of that ordinance and the reason we're proposing that.
That's fine. Bob?
Okay. Okay. You see that, okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just some introductory comments. You know, solar is, seems to be pretty close to motherhood and apple pie now. And, I mean, perhaps people might disagree in scale of solar, but the idea of solar is generally acceptable by most people. What I find surprising and concerning is that very few towns actually address major energy generation systems. As you see, our sister community in Bristol, they just had their third proposal for a major solar. Edgecombe's got one, I think Walderborough's got a couple of them. And really, there's no control over location. Now, you could say that, well, they're still pretty benign, they don't move, they don't create air emissions, they don't create sound, what have you. What they do is consume land. And that is not necessarily wrong, but my concern is that are they consuming otherwise productive, tax generating land, number one? And also, are they consuming historic views, important views to the community? And I I like to use as an example Route 1 just north of 1B. I mean, how many times you've gone up to Route 1 towards Walder Road, you look to the right and see the old fields and the wood, woods and all that? And this, that's kind of like Demerit County, right? It's a, it's a small municipality, but with a lot of businesses, but it's still rural in many ways. So how do we accommodate those two so opposed types of energy? One is to create or allow large-scale solar energy systems. The other one is not allow single projects to overwhelm a community. So that's what I had in mind. And so this ordinance was based in part on an ordinance that was approved in Rockport. And I think it, I think it hits where the compromise ought to be. So just going through it, solar energy systems serving one or two family residences, those are exempt regardless if they're in the ground or a roof. Roof-mounted solar systems, regardless of size, are exempt. And some of these systems can get pretty large, by the way. A ground-mounted solar systems that do not exceed 5,000 square feet in panel area are exempt. Ground-mounted systems that are between 5,000 square feet and one acre in panel area. Panel area basically means you take the area of the panels, the edge of that area, and do vertical lines and measure that area. So it's the the area of the perimeter, putting the perimeter of the panels. So if it's between 5,000 square feet, one acre, they are exempt, except they have to comply with the dimensional requirements and the buffer requirements. They can exceed, so a ground-mounted energy system can exceed one acre in area if at least 50% of the energy generated is consumed by principal use on the same parcel of land. So in other words, if, who knows, Hannahford's got a lot of land, if they decide they want to put up a couple acres of solar panels and that energy is at least 50% of it or more is going to their business, then it's exempt, except for the dimensional and buffer requirements. The next section just just reminds us that if the ground-mounted solar energy system exceeds 5,000 square feet in panel area or results in 20,000 square feet of disturbance, it requires site plan approval. So all the, all the standards of site plan approval would apply. So the dimensional requirements, a ground-mounted solar energy system shall not exceed 20 acres in panel area. Now, roughly 20 acre panel area is about a five megawatt system. And a five megawatt system is, my recollection, that's about the maximum or close to it, the maximum of a community energy system. That's the one where you as residents of Demerit County can can buy into that system and get a discount. They can't, the ground-mounted systems can't exceed 25 feet in height. They have to be at least 50 feet setbacks from property. The next system, the next section, just so if a ground-mounted system receives 20,000 square feet in panel area, it has to be buffered public roads and residences by planning firms, natural topographic features. If they exceed two acres an area, they have to be further buffered so that they won't be visible from a public road. Let's talk again about Route 1 north of of Route 1B. So nothing would prohibit a two or four, five, five acre panel area project from being located there. But that size would have to be buffered year-round. The Planning Board added this vegetation control should be by mechanical means only, no chemical vegetation control. Fencing, essentially local approval, maintenance of the facility and good repair, and really, the only other thing has to do with performance guarantees. Now, of course, we're at the cutting edge of solar right now. I had the solar system installed seven or eight years ago in my garage roof and it's already out of date. And my concern, it would be, okay, someone does a large system today and in 20 years from now, it may be a lot cheaper just to walk away from it rather than properly decommission and remove it. So that's what the performance guarantee is about. So.
Does anyone have any questions or comments? And again, I can't see you, so just, you know, speak up.
I did want to mention one thing related, but slightly unrelated. Many people have been receiving phone calls from intermediaries that represent solar farms. And I just think it's important for you guys to be aware of it. I myself had this experience where they have a broker calling you, asking for your CMP bills and then asking you to do a DocuSign for the quickest percentage off. I think there may be older people in the community who might not understand that they don't have to do that. And that is happening a lot right now. I know it's a little bit off topic, but I just figured it was also important because I've received several phone calls from people trying to ask me for my electric information so I can sign up for their farm to get a discount, but it's, it's a little sketchy. I just, I just thought that was important to mention because there's a lot of older people here who, you know, get the calls and don't quite understand what's going down.
Thank you. Bob, was your hand up? Okay.
I got a question, Robin.
Okay.
Are we able to tax these large solar farms as far as personal property, similar to what we do with Central Maine Power?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sure Bob's going to answer because we've talked about this. The state law exempts the smaller, I think it's 5W and and
I beg one.
And lower, five megawatt, I'm sorry, and 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 smaller from from state taxes. That was a law passed a year ago for state and local taxes, so property tax included.
Now, I should say that the legislature is debating right now whether to make any changes. I just, I think that probably they're getting some pressure from towns because, you know, you take a property in a commercial district and convert it to a non-taxable large land-consuming use, I think it's pretty tough.
Yeah.
But I do want to add that the, one of the, one of the reasons why I have been pursuing this, I'm familiar with a couple of projects and the one that just is, I get beside myself when I think about it, is Central Maine's is 600 acre. Think of the size of that, the conversion of 600 fake acres of mostly forest land to to that. Not only does this consume the land, changes the habitat, there's a variety of factors. And I do not believe that that is subject to zoning in those towns. Oh, I should say, by the way, these larger, I forgot to mention, these larger systems that's covered by the ordinance are only allowed in the C2 district and the rural district.
May I make a comment?
May I make a comment?
Question?
This is Haas.
Hi Haas, yeah, let me ask a quick question and then I'll turn it over to you. I just want to know, you had said that they don't move, well, they don't get up and walk, but the newer systems do move and they track the sun. Is that, is that problematic with what you've written in this ordinance?
No, there's a 26, I believe it's 25 or 26 foot maximum height.
Okay.
That, that should not be an issue.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Haas.
I just wanted, for me and Bob raised when we first discussed this on the Land Use Committee, but this was the, one of the key things Bob first raised, and I just want to, I think it's important we all be aware of it. I was really struck by this issue five years ago when I traveled through Germany by train. And you come to an open fee, you come to a huge factory and next to it will be 20 acres of solar panel. And what struck me was there were places where it was done in a way and it wasn't jarring in terms of the view. And there were other places where it totally seemed to turn your world upside down. And so one of the questions that, that Bob raised initially and we were looking at in terms of the setbacks, and I still question whether the, the setback is large enough is that the key issue here may be the view and whether people can see it or not and or how they see it. And that's, I think it's important that we just be aware of that going forward. I don't know how we address it more than we have already in this ordinance, but for me, that's a key issue is what it's doing to our views.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other comments, questions in terms about the solar energy systems ordinance? Okay, the only ones I have, Matt, and I think they're technical because this and the historic preservation ordinance are both chapter 107. And I don't think, right, is it? And the order of some of the sections doesn't follow, and I don't know which ones which, because I didn't get out my, my book of, you know, the code, whatever. It doesn't follow the, the format, but that's just a formatting thing. It doesn't have anything to do with the ordinance themselves. But I'll get with you afterwards. Is that okay?
We'll fix that.
Are there any other comments about the solar energy systems ordinance? Final words on the historic preservation or the charter amendment? Hearing none. We'll close the hearing and open the call, the Board of Selectmen's meeting to order. And first items on the agenda will be the ordinances and the charter amendment that we just discussed, the first being the historic preservation ordinance. And for the selectmen, any comments, questions or concerns that were not addressed earlier?
There was one thing that was brought to my attention and, and there's a misspelling on page one of approval at 10713.
There's one on 10712 too.
That was brought to me by a concerned citizen. Yeah, he had a few, you know.
Non substantive changes we can make.
Yeah, I'll check, we'll get those.
Oh, thank you for pointing those out.
Other than that, looks good.
The staff recommendation here, Robin, would be to approve the ordinances for inclusion on the warrant for the June 8th annual town secret valley.
Okay, and can we do the all three at once?
Sure, yeah. So it's the two ordinances and the, the charter amendment.
Okay, well, I'm making a, a motion to approve the historic preservation ordinance, the solar energy systems ordinance and the charter amendment regarding historic preservation review commission. Be approved for inclusion on the June 8th warrant for the town meeting.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
I'd just like to say thank you for everybody putting so much time into that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, second mark on that.
All in favor? Okay. And again, thank you all. The Land Use Committee, Bob, everybody that worked on it and everybody that participated in all of the workshops and what have you. I think we, together, you came up or we came up with, you know, some excellent new ordinances for the town. Okay, the next item on the agenda. The minutes of the March 3rd meeting, I'll keep them separate because not everybody was here for both meetings. The March 3rd meeting minute.
Move the March 3rd minutes, meeting minutes.
I just sent them today. Okay.
So I, I do have, I had a question. We had the budget minutes and I had a correction I needed to have Cheryl get a hold of that to change. Are we voting on that or are we just voting on the selectmen's regular meeting?
I was thinking we were voting on the selectmen's regular meeting, but if you'd like, what we can do is table this until the next meeting.
You know, I haven't even seen the minutes, so.
Okay, well.
I just want to table.
You'd like to, okay, would you like to rescind your motion then? Daryl?
Rescind my motion, yeah, yeah. It's table.
Okay. So your new motion is to table the minutes read for both meetings?
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor? All right. Financial reports, we received this afternoon. Summary sheet, because the office is closed, we didn't have access to the full reports. I know I have them here somewhere. The first is payroll. Payroll number 50.
I'll make the motion.
I will make them.
Yep. Go ahead.
Okay, now Mark, whoever moves any of the warrants, we were asked to say the date of the warrant and the amount of the warrant, since we don't have access to the whole file. And that way, then for the record, we will know the date and the amount. And so it can't be changed at a later time. Okay? So this is payroll warrant number 50, Mark, is that the one that you want to approve?
Sure. Let me get the notes for you. This is the payroll one.
So. Let's see, total payroll, the 26,930, 94. And the date would be, I think today's date is what they're looking for.
Well, the, okay, the, the pay date is 3/11/2021.
Okay.
So the, I'll move the 26,930, 94 for today's date.
3/11/2021?
Yes.
I'll second it. And that's payroll warrant number 50, five zero. Any discussion? Now I have two warrants. One I have named, I talked to Becky about this earlier today, general, which is our, our standard warrant that goes across all the different things that we pay for. The other one I have named Hager Enterprises. So if we can deal with the warrant preview entitled general with a pay date of 3/17. And that is in the amount of $201,500, 301,546.95. And I'll make a motion that we accept that warrant.
I'll move that.
Second it, Mark, I already made the motion. So you want to second it?
I seconded it, yes.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Okay. And the last is the warrant preview for Hager Enterprises with a pay date of 3/17/2021. And the amount is $89,619.52. Do I hear a motion to approve that?
Robin, I'll, yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the Hager warrant preview of 89,619.52 of 3/17.
Okay, I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor? Here we have three, four, opposed? Opposed? Want to oppose? Abstain?
I abstain.
Mark, you abstain? Okay. Okay, motion passes. Presentations, Mr. Roberts is here to talk about possible dates for the fireworks display in July.
Well, hopefully it's the fourth.
Exciting.
Every, everything that shows the fourth should be all right, but we can always change it when we get closer, if that's what the selectmen want.
Okay. I don't even know what day of the week that is. I don't think it's a weekend, is it?
July, July 4th is a Sunday.
Sunday.
Okay.
That would be good.
It would be, wouldn't it? Wouldn't it be nice if we were all back?
Yes. Crossed, yes.
Any questions for Chris? Comments? Are they going to be bigger and better?
I know on your budget, you, you didn't budget for this year, which is right because the fireworks guy just credited us completely for last year. Didn't cost anything to put them off. So he put all the money into this year and I didn't collect money from I'm not collecting any money this year for 2021 because they already paid in 2020. And I did send a letter to everyone and said, can I just hold your money on until next year? And that, I didn't get anyone asking for the money back.
Great, great. Well, hopefully we'll have a nice big Fourth of July celebration this year. So, and thank you for what you do to make it happen as always, you know, you tend to forget all that goes into doing that for everybody. So thank you for that.
Yes, thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Well, thank every, if everyone's listening to this, thank everyone that donates to it. That makes, that makes the job easy.
True, true. And we do appreciate those donations. We have a wonderful fireworks display, a wonderful party on the pier or the parking lot. So, made better this year because we might have restrooms that people can use if they need them.
Won't have to rent the water pump.
Well, you might want, rent one just so that there's not a long line.
The line could be 100 yards long.
Well, hopefully it won't have to be six feet apart.
Oh, yes. Fingers crossed, huh?
All right.
Okay, well, thank you, Chris, for all your work and for joining us tonight with the update. And hopefully it'll be on Sunday, the Fourth of July this year.
Yeah, it'll always be adjusted as we get closer in case something happens.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Citizens comment, general correspondence. We have a request from the Public Safety and Accessibility Collaboration, Collaborative, I'm sorry. They sent a letter, map. And they were requesting a donation from the town of Dammer Scotta in the amount of $500 to help them produce the map. And I'll make a motion that we provide the Public Safety and Accessibility Collaborative with a $500 donation to produce the maps. That will go up in the spring. People are walking a lot more, not only because it's spring, but because it's one thing that they, an activity that they can do during the COVID. And this really provides some nice spaces for them to walk. You'll see on the map, it's bigger than Dammer Scotta, but you'll also see on the map that it's, they're collecting money, they're, I think they want $2,800 is what the total cost would be, and they're collecting money from more than just Dammer Scotta tech businesses and what have you.
Yeah.
So, hence the collaborative. So, motion's made. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, terrific. And I will say that I see tons of people walking on the measured mile loop from Hodgson Street, School Street and Chapman Street. So. It's nice that they have places to walk in town for people that either live here and can't get out to the trails that are beyond town, you know, it's quick to get to and what have you. So that's terrific. Now, man, right, Matt, you're on.
Yeah, the, the first item, I sent out a, a letter to you earlier today, so you may not have it, had a chance to, to look at it. It's from Revision Energy, who had given us the quote for the, the EV charging electric vehicle charging station quite a while ago. First, we ordered the grant from Efficiency Maine. And I, you know, we've been looking at ways to charge a fee for people who use that service. And it's, if you, if you do a card system, an electronic system, it increases the, the price of the, the, the charging station. I think we were at 4,400 or whatever, up to somewhere.
14?
Thousand, so. It, it, I, I understand the, the board's previous position on this, that no one should have it free. But I think if we look on the other side, that we are assisting in this effort to reduce the use of fossil fuel. We're encouraging people who drive electric vehicles to stop downtown, you know, while their vehicle's being charged. They are hopefully shopping around our, our village, shopping at our, our restaurants. They still would be subject to the three hour maximum parking. And we could, if you'd like, we could put a donation box out. And I, I wouldn't recommend this, but I've got a couple of the old parking meters down in the basement, we could put those out. But I would, I would say not. And I, I did, on the message that Belfast has a similar system, like as soon as I got that contact information, I did send that, did send a couple of questions up to Belfast, but I haven't had a response yet. I, I, I believe though, that, you know, based on the way things are moved on electric vehicles, we'll have those two parking spaces filled, you know, during the height of summer. Again, we'll, we'll restrict the amount of time that people can be at those.
The question I have is that we restrict parking to three hours during the day. What would prevent me taking my little Volt over there and plugging it in at nine o'clock at night and then picking it up at eight in the morning? You know, so, so I don't have to pay energy for my house, you know, that, that the town's going to pay for me to charge my car overnight. What would, you know, what would we do?
There's, unless, unless we flip the switch, which will be attached to the, to the restroom, you would be able to do that. And there are, and I was told by Revision Energy that there are local folks who do take advantage of systems that way.
Yeah. Yeah, where they're taking advantage of the town's taxpayers.
Well, they are, yeah, in a way, but, but I guess the, the fact is we're getting that, that is being powered by our solar array and that, that is being powered by our solar array, and we're not paying anymore to hook this up, because we've got plenty of, of, you know, of, of energy to, to power that in the restroom. So, yeah.
You could also
No, yeah, we haven't gone through a yearly cycle yet for our solar energy, so we hope that we have enough power for all of the town's needs. But, okay, Daryl, did you have your hand up?
I was just gonna mention to your point, it's a good point, but you could also limit parking hours or whatnot, or close it down, certain, known overnight parking or something like that, but
That's right.
This is an interesting letter you sent, I'm excited. A couple of years ago, when we did, when we started new, this is, I'm going on my, here, but when we put our tanks in, one of the things that we looked into was the possibility of, of me putting, or this Copenhagen putting a, an EV station here and being able to charge for it. And we found the same thing, that I did research on it, and basically, it's a, it's a you, you can't make money off of it. I'll leave it at that. So, to, to, to put the, the card reading system in, to, to, to subscribe to it, the upkeep, whatever, and it just, yeah, if you're upside down on it, so it's almost, it's cheaper to put the non-payment system in, but seems like it's gonna be a necessary evil, not, I shouldn't say evil, but it's, there's a lot more hybrids around. Electric, we've seen a lot of Teslas in the area now, a lot of Teslas, so, yeah. Well, that's it.
Okay, Josh, did you have your hand up? Okay. Okay.
So, I, you don't need to, to vote on it, but because you, you did talk about having a charging system, and that seemed to be, you know, the consensus of the board last time, a fee charging system. I did wanna run that by you again, to see if we could proceed without the, the, the fee charging system, and then we could see how it goes. You know, the technology is, is gonna change, I'm sure, where we could add a credit card system or an iPhone payment system in the future. But I, I guess my, my recommendation at this point is to install the system and you know, not charge, not charge for that, that electricity.
Thoughts from the board? Aside from Daryl, me?
Makes sense.
Okay. Like I say, if we do that, then we ought to have either shut it off at night or put signage up that, you know, it's three hours parking twenty-four seven, unlike the other parking places. We're after six o'clock at night, we park forever.
Yeah. Because no overnight usage or something like that, no.
People that come to dinner, you know, people that come to dinner might wanna charge their cars, and you have somebody that lives here charging their car. So you still wanna have, there are nighttime businesses that, that, you know, you wanna support.
Yep. When you have people arriving for business or for dinner, and they're fighting over whether they can have one of those two parking spaces, then you're gonna have to revisit this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Depends on where they're coming from. I don't know, you know, how far you can drive on a charge. So, you know, if they're coming from Bristol, they can probably drive up here, go to dinner and drive home again, but if they're coming from Boston, maybe not. So. Okay.
All right. I need.
Okay.
And then I sent out the quarterly report. It was in the form of a PowerPoint presentation that HM Payson gave to the Financial Advisory Committee the other day. And I, I can't pull it up on my screen right now, but if you, if you look at the trust fund investments since May thirty-first, two thousand thirteen, which is when we started with, with HM Payson, we doubled the, the money that we have in the bank.
Isn't that wonderful?
Yeah, just strictly on the, on the, the investment income. So
A marvelous point for us.
Yeah, it worked well.
So, I think that's great. So, yeah, I haven't had a chance to look at it. Be sure to look at it, because it really is some good stuff.
Yeah. Free has the summary of, of the equity investments. And, and I think I say this every time I review this with you, it all could change tomorrow, but
Oh, sure.
Over the last eight years, we've done very well by it. So
Yeah.
And an HM Payson isn't dependent on a mutual fund, or, you know, what the indices are doing. They, this is the beauty of, of their, their plan for us in their other accounts, is they pick the stocks that they invest in, and they have a certain criteria that takes into account the value, not just, you know, the, the game stock, stocks of this work, you know, they're looking at the value of each investment. So, you know, hopefully, if, if we do get into a, a market correction, we won't be hit as bad as, as, you know, Dow Jones or Standard and Poor indices. But because of that methodology. And I'm not trying to give them a, a, you know, a plug here, but, but that's, I just wanted to describe the method they use for investing.
Yeah, they done well.
Yeah, and, and Lou is on the, Lou's on the committee, so he had the full-blown presentation the other day. And
Will, please? You're mute. Lou, you're mute. Time out.
Oh, we can't hear ya.
You, you're mute. Still mute.
I got muted somehow. No, they did a great job. They're good company. They've been around many years. Their philosophy is good. You can trust their work.
Yeah, and, and like I said, I, I looked at that today and I thought, wow, they've really done a good job for the town, that's for sure. So. Okay.
That's all I, that's all.
That's all.
Official action. The first is payment in lieu of taxes from the Midcoast Friends Meeting. Do I?
Well, I'll make, I'll make a motion to accept the four hundred and twenty-five dollar contribution from the Midcoast Friends Meeting as payment in lieu of taxes.
I will second that.
Okay. Any discussion?
That's still the only one.
Uh, no.
You got
This last year, Midcoast Community Action, after they bought the Meadow, or the Ledgewood Court Apartments, started to contribute a, a pilot as well.
That was, that was a significant amount too, wasn't it? Yeah.
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 Four something, I think.
That's about
Four thousand, yeah.
Yeah.
I just wanted to get a plug in for him.
Yeah.
Oh, no, you know, we, we appreciate that they continue to do this, to set the standard for other nonprofits in town.
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
And the Vine Street Drainage Project bids. Okay, I just came in yesterday afternoon, I believe.
Yes.
From Matt.
Yeah, I sent out the, the bids, the summary of the bids last week, right after we received them, but then I sent out the recommendation from the Public Works Committee and the engineer to you yesterday.
Hey.
Just, I'm just pulling up again on my iPhone. Well, what we're, what the staff, the committee and the engineer are recommending is that we, we contract, the town contract with Farley Incorporated. They had the, the lowest overall bid, and they also had the, 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 the lowest order of low items, lowest items on, yeah, unit price. And at this point, we don't have enough funds to do the, you know, the full hundred and forty-seven thousand dollar project, but I, I'm asking you to approve the contract with them, and then we'll use their unit pricing to negotiate the amount equal to the amount that we have available for this.
I will make that motion. We approve the Farley contract.
What else? If I could Yeah, if I could suggest the wording on
Yeah.
Town Charter bid guidelines to allow for a negotiated contract, our Incorporated, the low bidder on Vine Street Drainage Project, and once my eyes authorize the the contract and expense funds current, expend funds currently available in the paving and drainage capital reserve account.
I will move the article. Did you hear what I said?
Yeah. We were live. I'll second it, and we can move to discussion.
So, sorry, Robyn, I'll raise my hand sometimes.
Daryl, no, that's okay. You sounded like Josh, so I look at Josh.
Um, I, just some questions, you know, looking at, so we, with the bid prices come in, we're looking at negotiating. To me, it doesn't seem like a project that you can do, is a kind of an all or nothing project. I'm just curious to what we're gonna negotiate on. Lower pricing, that's all.
Yeah, yeah. So we had an alternate bid, and, you know, potentially, we could carve a little out of that. And then there is an existing fifteen-inch line in the ground that parallels the clay pipe. We're not certain whether that can be salvaged or not. So, right off the top, there, there's ten thousand dollars that potentially could come up. And then then it's an issue where, where Gartley and Dorsey has worked with Farley before, and they're gonna sit down and do some, you know, with, the term is value engineering, to see maybe there is a better way, you know, once you get the contractor involved in the project, maybe there's a better cost, and, and still achieving the same result.
Yeah, yeah, we just might, you know, concern would be going back and doing something later that always costs more, you know, so, you know, with overlap, so we, we want to make sure we get it done and don't do it right the first time without having to go back and, you know, go back in later. So, as long as they, they're confident they can sit and look at it and re-engineer it or whatever, contractor. Yeah, not too many surprises, because we'd be, not a lot of room to wiggle there for surprises, so.
Yeah, and that, oh, it's Josh. This was a, a point that, that came up at the, at the meeting yesterday, I guess. It's all kind of blending there, yesterday or Monday. That, w- w- once we have them there, we don't wanna pay for mobilization again. Let's have them do the whole thing. So, that's why I took some money from our general paving and, and drainage account to, to come up with the total that I did.
Yeah, and, and the other part was, is that we've done, well, the town staff and the engineers met, they've met with the neighborhood people, worked this all out, and we don't wanna have to come back five years down the road and finish what we should have done, you know, this year.
Good point. Both of them are, actually. Any other question? Daryl?
Oh, I, I was just to that point, I said, yeah, we, we, you know, I, I'm, I'm okay with the engineers and, you know, working with Farley and making sure, but if it comes to a point where they say, well, you know, we can only do this much, but you have to, you know, five years down the road, we, we'd have to revisit it, so we need to get it all done. So, just as all my concern is that long-term, yeah. Value.
If that turns out to be the case, I'll come back to you.
Yeah, yeah. Sounds good.
Anyone else have any comments, questions or concerns? Okay, all in favor of the motion to waive the town charter requirements and go with Farley and Company and let Matt do the negotiation? That's an abbreviated version. Opposed? And abstain?
I abstain.
Okay. Motion carries. Selectment items.
I didn't get a second on that.
I thought Daryl seconded it.
Thank you.
Oh.
Okay.
I thought Robyn seconded that one.
Yeah.
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 Yeah. Say, I know I didn't, but I
Okay, then I, I did. You know, I wouldn't have if, if Daryl didn't, I would have, so. Selectments discussions items, and I'm just gonna go around the way I see you on the, on my computer screen. So, we'll start, Lou, with you.
I have nothing.
Okay. Josh?
Matt, have you received many complaints on the Biski Road light, how it doesn't change too quickly?
I've been the number one complainer. So So they came out and they fixed the light, you know, when it was, when it was stuck on flashing. It's been now four weeks. And and it's, it's not cycling as quickly as it, it was. And it's, I, I had a pickup truck in front of me the other day run the light. AD came out, looked at it, went back to wherever they came from, and Hugh called him yesterday and said, get back here, because it's not right. Maybe an issue with the cam not picking up the, the folks coming down church. But, yeah, the, the police chief has heard some complaints and you know, it's, it's an issue. It needs to be addressed. There, there's no reason why it has to be that long a wait for Church Street and Biski Road traffic.
Yeah, clean, clean the lens on the camera.
Good idea.
That might be it.
I thought it was just me the other day, so I didn't realize it was
You know, I, it's, it's less than two minutes, but when you're used to it being twenty or thirty seconds, it's, it's very annoying.
Does that get adjusted with, in the summer?
It goes to a, it goes to a different cycle when, and during the low traffic periods. I can't tell you exactly what it is, but I know, like, during rush hour, if you're coming from one of those side roads, you have to wait longer. So if there's a lot of traffic on Main, it won't change as quickly for Biski and Church. But if you like coming home at night, you know, after these meetings, boom, it sees me coming up church and it changes for me. So, wow, this is what, this is what it means to be town manager. No, you're, seriously, Mark, I'm not sure how it, how it operates, but I'll, I'll find out.
Okay. Anything else, Josh?
I'll just keep weathering the storm and keep bugging away and get your vaccination if you want one, and be safe, and hopefully we'll meet soon in person.
Oh, I can't wait.
Yeah. I, I have nothing this evening. I'll be right along for you, Robyn.
Okay, Mark?
No, I'm good. Just everybody stay safe, and I think we're getting there.
Okay, I agree with you all. I have nothing other than stay well, stay safe. And summer's coming. Yippee. Look what time it is and look how light it is.
Yeah.
And now, Haas, I can see you. You're not backlit anymore.
I'm glad.
So, with that, I think, Matt, Matt, we're going into executive session.
Yeah, yeah.
I hate Close the
I'm gone.
Board of Selectments meeting for executive session regarding consultation with town legal counsel regarding the dispute with the contractor regarding, we got a lot of regardings in there. Compliance with Winter Roads Maintenance Agreement per one MRSA Section four oh five six E.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. All in favor?
And I abstain and thank you, and have a good evening.
Okay.
Thank you, Mark. Good evening.
Now
Okay.
I did set up a separate link for this, but I hate to wall. Oh, and then Evan, you got, Evan and Linda, you need to
Yeah. Hey, Matt, I can leave. I just wanted to ask, will there be, were there be any action after the executive?
I, no, I don't believe so. If, I'm going to put the, the meeting back on record, though, when, when the board comes out of executive session.
Okay, all, all right. I'll leave you all to it then. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay. I had set up a separate link for this, and hopefully...
You're still recording.
Uh, recording back on.
I'll, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I will second that motion.
Okay, all in favor? Not even gonna ask if there's any discussion. Okay, thank you all. Have a...
Go feed your dogs.
Your St. Patrick's Day, and go feed your dogs too.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you.
All right.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Bye.